You want Joe to fill in for you, Joe?
Joe, you might.
We're very sorry to say you're going to sit down.
Now, sit down, that means.
He's a citizen, he can do what he wants. You need to sit down.
Oh. That's right, I'm working now.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, for clarifying the situation.
He could walk around?
Yeah, I believe in you with the proper system time to time.
Everybody ready down there for showtime?
You didn't ask us.
She don't care. I thought I just handled that.
We worked the whole meeting.
Good morning. We will call to order the April tenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners. At this time, it's my pleasure to invite up to the podium Pastor Jeremy Rebman with the First United Methodist Church, who will lead us in the invocation. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Tim Zork, and we will start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders. Would everyone please rise?
Oh God, thank you. Thank you for the United States of America. And God, we thank you especially for our freedoms, for we know, Lord, that they were won and that they are maintained at great cost. And so, God, we join together in asking your blessing on those who guard our freedom and our safety. And we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful place you've given us to live. Lord, would you bless Indian River County, that according to your will, we would be prosperous and safe and happy and most of all, the loving people as you, Lord, our love. And we thank you, oh God, for our local government. We know that they are called public servants, God, for a reason. And we know because you've told us that we're really never greater than when we serve. So, Lord, I ask your blessing now upon our county commission. We ask that you give them wisdom and discernment. God, you stir up in them the noblest passions of their hearts, enable them to serve us in a way that brings them satisfaction, knowing that today, they did all the good they could for as many as they could, in all the ways that you enabled them to do. In all this, we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag. Please place the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I have none. Anyone?
Happy to move the agenda? Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Slurry, seconded by Commissioner Flesher. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five zero. It appears it's time for my weekly disclaimer to bear with us, some patience, understanding, as we are still working through some new technology equipment. We now move to proclamations and presentations, and the first is a presentation of a proclamation expressing the town of Orchid's appreciation to Indian River County. And this will be presented by Noah Power, the Town of Orchid manager. Good morning, Noah.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
We're doing great, thank you.
Very good, thank you. And to all of you, thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to address you here this morning. So many times, good things happen because of a lot of good people working very diligently. And I'm here today on behalf of the mayor, my council, and the Town of Orchid to express appreciation for you and your staff that have helped us through some turbulent times over the past couple of years with the renourishment of our beaches and dunes. And so, you know, we recognize that the key to success is corporation and teamwork. And you have a group of individuals that have exemplified that, and they've made my task exponentially easier because of their efforts. And so, with that, I'd like to read our proclamation to you and again, just personally express my appreciation for your staff and their efforts. Whereas the Town of Orchid is located on a barrier island in Indian River County, it's - excuse me, is susceptible to the threats of coastal damage and dune erosion by hurricanes and nor'easter storms. Whereas the Town of Orchid has always had Indian River County as an effective ally in the recovery of significant coastal erosion following turbulent storm seasons. And whereas the Town of Orchid fragile dune system has once again successfully been restored following major coastal events in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen because of the interlocal agreement entered into with the Indian River County during the cooperative recovery efforts following Hurricane Matthew in two thousand and sixteen. And whereas the Town of Orchid has following the previous storm events enduring this latest beach renourishment project, have been able to rely on the extensive experience and willingness to help of Indian River County's knowledgeable and professional staff in the fields of coastal engineering, environmental protection, the law, parks and recreation, and life preservation. Now, therefore, the Town Council wishes to sincerely express its gratitude on behalf of the Town of Orchid to Indian River County, including specifically the esteemed Board of Commissioners, County Administrator Jason Brown, Coastal Engineer James Gray, Environmental Specialist Kendra Coop, Superintendent of Parks David Fleetwood, Life Guard Captain John Frazier, and County Administrator Dylan Rangel for the collaborative spirit and hands-on support of the Town of Orchid's ongoing coastal management and dune preservation efforts, including particularly the town's most recent emergency dune restoration project. Be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Orchid in a public meeting this fourth day of April in the year of two thousand and eighteen does hereby express its sincerest gratitude to Indian River County, and be it further resolved that this proclamation is presented to the Indian River County Board of Commissioners at an upcoming public meeting of that body. Signed, Mayor Hal Osfe.
Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for coming this morning to read this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Would like to mention, I think, Noah, it might have been before your time, back when we were doing the Sector Three project, but it was a pretty big project and included the beach in front of the Town of Orchid. But for several reasons, the first season we worked on Sector Three, we couldn't get all the way down to Orchid. And I remember talking to some of the residents up there. And, you know, I think that they, obviously they weren't initially happy, but they were certainly understanding of what we were trying to do and to work with the Town of Orchid. And so, I think we've had a long relationship working with the town. It's been very positive. And I just do want to mention that we do have a beach renourishment plan, a long-term plan, and that we do cooperate with all folks along our coastal beaches to make sure that we can get the sand on the beach as quick as we can and provide protection. But we certainly appreciate the recognition from the town, and thank you for coming here this morning to read it. And Commissioner Flesher?
And thank you again to the entire board for taking the time to do this. Actually, upstairs, the proclamations we have on display all have our signatures on them. And it's about time that we have one from another municipality or another legislative authority here in Indian River County. So, it'll be nice to have that on display. Thank you.
Thank you again, appreciate it. Next will be a presentation of a proclamation honoring Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen for thirty years of service. This will be presented by Commissioner Flesher. And I see Wheezy and some of her gang there. So, why don't you all come on up to the podium?
Come on down.
Commissioner Flesher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to present this proclamation that's going to say table and soup and kitchen many times, but this nourishment goes well beyond what food is all about. And it's been a distinct pleasure to watch you and work with the team and see the great rewards that you've given to the community, both when I'm in this capacity and when I was working in the Gifford community in law enforcement. I just appreciated watching the volunteers. It meant so much that you all get up in that morning and start the day worrying about other human beings in our community. So, thank you. With that, a proclamation is being presented honoring Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen for thirty years of service. Whereas Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen was founded in April nineteen eighty-eight by J. Ralph Lundie to feed the hungry and to provide services at the AMA Mount Zion Church in Gifford. And whereas the mission of Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen is to openly display the basic Christian principles by feeding the hungry and providing clothing and comfort to those in need. And whereas Our Father's Soup Kitchen served twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-five meals in two thousand and seventeen. And whereas Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen delivers sixty meals, six days per week, to the homebound elderly in Gifford. And whereas, through a partnership and the Treasure Coast Community Health, Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen provides much-needed dental care to Gifford residents in exchange for fifty hours of service to the community. This program has been in operation since two thousand and thirteen and has helped one hundred and fifty-eight persons with dental care, including dentures. And whereas Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen has no paid employees, all staff and members of the Board of Directors are volunteers. Currently, over forty-five individuals donate their time and effort to provide this much-needed community service in the Gifford area. Whereas Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen offers fellowship, a safe place for children during summer vacation, and a place to celebrate with holiday events for all. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board recognizes the thirty years of service provided by Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen, duly adopted this tenth day of April, two thousand and eighteen, which is signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you, team.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, team. There's got to be more than that. You do so much in the community. Wheezy?
Yes.
Why don't we say a few words about Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen? Madam President?
Okay, all right. This is Ms. Lydia Forbes.
I'm Lydia Forbes. This is Mr. Butler, who has been with Our Father's Table Soup Kitchen for thirty years. He was one of our original founders. Marion Metakis, who's our vice president, and Wheezy Carmack, who does everything else.
I'm better known as the Get Her Done Chairman.
Yes, you are.
We're very happy to be here, and we thank you all for this honor.
Is there anything that we want to reach out to the community if they want to help along the way in this great mission that you've been so dedicated to for all of the years?
Well, what we're looking for is volunteers. And so, I would like to invite everybody who's here. We're open Monday through Friday from about seven-thirty in the morning till we clean up about two o'clock, and we always need people to help us.
And if somebody wanted to volunteer, how would they get in touch?
Okay, they could call the kitchen. The number is five-six-two-six-two-six-eight. Or they can call me directly. My number is two-two-eight-nine-eight-four-five.
That's fantastic. And I hope that we've cultivated a few more volunteers, because what you do is very rewarding. And thank you very much for the mission at hand. We have a built-in photographer for you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Wheezy. There you go. Fantastic. Who's at the kitchen now, if you're all here? Who's at the kitchen, if you all are here? Okay. Somebody's got to be cooking.
Okay, everyone ready?
We're going to try.
On three. One, two, three. All right, we'll do one more. One, two, three.
Thank you once again, ladies and gentlemen.
Next is a presentation of a proclamation designating April eighth through April fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Crime Victims Week. And I think we have Major Flowers there and some folks. So, y'all want to come on up to the podium? You going to bring everybody else with you, or they're going to make you do this on your own?
They're a little shy.
Yeah. Let me go ahead and read the proclamation. We'll be glad to hear a few words from you. It's proclamation designating April eighth through April fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas victims of crime across America need and deserve support and assistance to help them cope with the consequences of crime. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week offers us all the opportunity to promote strength and unity in helping victims and survivors of crime through a wide range of supportive services offered by over ten thousand community and justice system-based programs, and the more than thirty-two thousand federal and state statutes that define and protect their rights. And whereas, by being united against crime and for victims' rights and services, we gain strength as individuals, as communities, and as a nation as a whole, and offer strength to victims who seek to recover in the aftermath of a crime. And whereas, America has joined together annually each April since nineteen eighty-one to recognize the needs and rights of crime victims and survivors during National Crime Victims Rights Week. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that April eighth through fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, be designated as Crime Victims Rights Weeks in Indian River County, and the Board honors crime victims and those who serve them during this week and throughout the year. Adopted this tenth day of April, two thousand and eighteen, signed and endorsed by all five county commissioners. Please, a few words?
Thank you. I'm very grateful for you recognizing the Indian River County Victims Rights Coalition. My name is Paul Zelno, and I'm the chairman for the coalition. With me are Christine Mackia. She's a victim advocate for the Indian River County Sheriff's Office. And Sharon Correa, also a victim advocate from the sheriff's office. And of course, Major Flowers. And these advocates are the ones that field the calls at two o'clock in the morning from law enforcement for victims of crime. And they walk them through the legal process and emotionally console them, among other things. The coalition's mission is to increase community awareness of victims' issues, increase victim awareness of community services, and support National Crime Victims Rights Week. The coalition members include victims of crime throughout the county, business owners, social workers, victim advocates from the sheriff's office, and victim advocates from the state attorney's office. The coalition is a 501(c) nonprofit organization. It provided financial assistance to victims of crime for housing, including a donation to save space, and other acute services to victims. We continue to create awareness of the dangers of drinking and driving to those court-ordered DUI attendees. We are currently expanding our services to victims. In the interest of public safety, we're creating a speakers bureau to address the civic groups throughout our county. We're going to call it the Night Has a Thousand Eyes. We invite all members of the county commissioners to attend the annual Victims Vigil on Thursday, April twelfth, at six o'clock, Memorial Island. I want to present a special thank you to Commissioner O'Brien and his administrator, Misty Purcell, for accepting our invitation for that event. The Victims Vigil is a highlight of Victims of Crime Week. It's an emotionally moving ceremony attended by family members of victims of crime, volunteers, and police departments throughout the county. State Attorney Bruce Colton will be on hand to read the names of the victims, supported by a keynote speaker in Sheriff Lor. I want to thank you for the opportunity to accept this proclamation.
Thank you. And thank you for all that you folks do for the victims. We appreciate it. Thank you. The next presentation is a proclamation recognizing the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And Commissioner Zork will be presenting that. And I think we have a whole - there they are. Y'all, come on, come on down. Commissioner Zork.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As they make their way to the podium, we will start reading the proclamation. Good morning, everyone. This is a proclamation recognizing National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical service. And when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Indian River County Sheriff's Office Dispatch Center. Public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are a vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety dispatchers of Indian River County Sheriff's Office have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of crime, and treatment of patients. They are knowledgeable and highly trained individuals who work closely with police, fire, and medical personnel. And whereas, Indian River County Sheriff's Office Public Safety Dispatchers dispatched two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four calls for service for law enforcement, and twenty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-nine calls for fire rescue in two thousand and seventeen, and answering sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-six-nine-one-one calls, and seventy-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighteen administrative calls. Whereas, each year, the second full week of April is dedicated to the men and women who serve as public safety telecommunicators. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, Indian River County, Florida, that the week of April eighth through April fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, be designated as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Indian River County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe, adopted this tenth day of April, two thousand and eighteen, signed by all five county commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Morning. Would you like to say a few words?
As public safety dispatchers, it's the job that I've been doing for over forty years. Things have changed immensely. We are the people that sit in the dark. We're the ones that don't get seen by the public, but our job is equally important. And I appreciate the fact that you have taken this opportunity to recognize us for the jobs that we do. The APCO, or Association for Public Communicational Officials, is still trying to get with the occupation office to change our category from a secretarial administrative position, which is far from, to a special risk category. And we hope that that will happen. Unfortunately, it's been denied a few times, but I still like to promote that because our job does deal with lives of people. I mean, they don't call us for good things. No one ever calls nine-one-one to say, "Have a good night." You know, it's always during their worst part of a tragedy of their life. And we have to help walk them through that, provide them with emergency medical instructions, give the correct locations to our emergency responders. Everything that we do is recorded and always under the eye of everyone. A mistake made by an operator could be very horrendous, the outcome, sending someone to the wrong place. It could cost lives. Our job, we may not be out there being the forefront like the firefighters and our law enforcement officers, but we're definitely there in the shadows, still making sure that everything gets done correctly. And I would like to thank you again for recognizing us for this week.
Very good.
Chairman, I'd also like to add a few words. Had the occasion to call nine-eleven on St. Patrick's Day evening after my daughter, very observantly, we were driving down the road, and she says, "Dad, I think there's a body on the side of the road." And I said, "Are you sure?" So, we turned around and went back. And sure enough, there's a person on the side of the road, but then they began to move. And we realized that maybe they had had a little too much festivities during the day by their inability to walk forward. But we had a good interaction with the dispatchers, and they got some folks there to help them very quickly before the man stumbled out into traffic, and would have been a much worse situation. And also want to thank you in the past for all the data collection you've helped me assemble over the years, keeping track of certain calls for service in different areas. You've always been very prompt in getting that information out to us to help, at least for me, make better decisions on how we move forward on different issues. So, thank you very much to all your staff and the sheriff and Lieutenant Buffington, and some of the other folks here that are - I see that are not here with us today, but we know them by name, and we appreciate their service as well.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. And Sandy and Lieutenant Buffington are very modest in their accomplishments. I can tell you that these men and women work extremely hard. The largest component in our agency with the highest rate of turnover, a lot to learn. In fact, they're not on Channel One, as we like to call it, until after one year of training. Recently, they've been reaccredited on a national level, which is very, very rare in the state of Florida. Additionally, today, I don't know if you're aware, but we have a vessel fire. Power to the beach is shut off temporarily. But I was listening to the nine-one-one operator on the way. They're talking to Coast Guard, game and fish, the city police. All the deputies are scrambling. So, that's just a fine example of what they do every day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Flesher?
Sheriff, just can you let us know if there's anything we can do to assist in that reclassification that Sandy's talking about?
Certainly. There was a bill in Florida Legislature this year. Unfortunately, it didn't get any traction. But I'm certain there's a few things you can help us with in the next coming weeks when we chat.
And I trust that my colleagues and I would seek the opportunity to do that. It's very important.
And I know some of you have visited the comm center. I would encourage you to do that. It's very exciting. A lot of flashing lights and a lot of phones ringing, obviously. Thank you.
You know, Sandy said she works very much in the dark, and I just want to correct that she works very much in the light. She brings - this team brings together so much resource and assistance through a calming voice and through information that people quite honestly don't know what they're seeking, but that the person on the other end of the line, our telecommunicator, knows what the people want, having never met them, never seen them, but speaking on the telephone. So, we're greatly indebted to that. And even so, to be very much a strong part of getting the men and women who serve in all capacities home safely and to the call in the correct location with the - location with the best information that can be cultivated over the phone. So, thank you so much, team, for all you do every day.
Sir, thank you, Commissioner. And I was observing Commissioner Adams and Jason Brown, our administrator, when Sandy mentioned four decades of experience. And I know a little bit about these two, so, their whole life, Sandy. You've been dispatching for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming here.
Nick, thank you.
Well, we'll be here next year when you talk about the fifth.
Wow!
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming here.
Nick, thank you.
Well, we'll be here next year when you talk about the fifth.
Wow!
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's going on, boys?
Okay, on three, everyone. One, two, three. Again, one more. One, two, three. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you once again. That concludes proclamations and presentations. There's no minutes to approve. It takes us to informational items, just, Commissioners, two things. One, there's a letter regarding our Road and Bridge Department congratulating them on a job well done on Morningside Drive, and particular Rick Speerka, Clint Kirkland, Will Scott, and Jeff Hoffman. We recognize that we certainly appreciate the good work that those folks are doing out in the community for us on Road and Bridge. And Commissioners, if you didn't check the venue event calendar, it's really interesting. We've got both the Sebastian High School and Vera Beach High School are holding their proms at the intergenerational building. So, I thought that was kind of neat. And plus, a whole bunch of other events going on in the county, so make sure that you take a look at that venue. And Commissioner Adams, you have a community event coming up, I believe. Is that correct?
I do. I have community office hours.
And that's when?
Next Thursday, from 10 to 12, at North County Library.
There we go. Okay. Anything else, Commissioners? That takes us to the consent agenda. We have two items. Does anybody need to pull anything?
Well, this is a record.
Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to have a consent agenda item pulled for additional discussion? Seeing none, Commissioners? We have a motion from Commissioner Fletcher, seconded by Commissioner Slory. All in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. There's no constitutional officers under public items. There's none. County administrators, no items. Moving to departmental matters, under emergency services, a letter to Governor Rick Scott regarding FEMA reimbursement for Hurricane Irma. And Jason, you want to summarize? Oh, we have Ted here, okay. Good morning, Ted.
I would like to comment. I think that in my, over 30 years of county government, I think this is the shortest agenda I've ever seen for a official in my life.
That's just an example of good leadership here, Ted.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. For consideration today is a draft letter that we have put together for your consideration to the governor's office. They've had a significant change in the way FEMA does reimbursement, especially for the sheltering operations that occur within the county when we have a disaster of any type. Currently, the, we would go ahead and submit for the, the school board would submit for themselves for the reimbursement costs. FEMA and the local, and the State Emergency Management Office have changed their policy and their understanding of the current law, and are now requiring us to file for everything. So, this can and will create a significant hardship for the county in the event of a declared disaster. And we're just recommending that the board take this into consideration and approve the draft letter that we've submitted for you.
Thank you, Ted. Any questions of staff? Commissioners, or Jason, do you have anything?
I'd just like to add that, you know, staff has, find some real problems with this. Any, anytime there's a storm, we would be looking at taking on additional costs. The time to get reimbursed by FEMA is significant. It's been six months since Hurricane Irma, and now the state's just determining which way to go with this. We haven't gotten any reimbursement from FEMA for that storm. We could be out significant dollars. There are sometimes storms when, when the storm turns away at the last moment, there is no declaration, so there would be no FEMA money coming, so the county would be taking on a responsibility. There are some funding questions. We would be subject to paying the school board's, the cost for the school board's employees at their pay practices. I don't know what they pay, whether it's time and a half, straight time, double time, but we would be involved in paying an expense that we don't have governance over. And we shouldn't have governance over how the school board pays their employees during a storm. But I always think it's dangerous whenever you divorce a financial decision from having to pay for that financial decision. So, I think we could run into problems down the road of how many employees are needed to staff these shelters, what is their pay rate? The decision makers need to be the ones paying the bills when they're, when they're, when they're making expenditures, because that's just a dangerous road to go down. And to speak to the timeliness of the payment, we're still awaiting payment for many PWs from Hurricane Matthew. That's 18 months ago now. One of those is a beach project that has been in EHP review, which is some kind of environmental review since October. So, even in the best of scenarios, we could be out over a year for the dollars. We'd be stuck with a match in the best case scenario, and there are times when we might not get reimbursed at all for an expense that, for decades, including the 2004 storms. And apparently, Matthew, I guess between when Matthew hit and Irma hit, the responsibility for this change from the, from the, from the schools to the states, to, or to the counties. So, I don't know what that does as far as impact on ongoing storms like Matthew. If the state's made a determination that it's a legal responsibility of the counties for Irma, I don't know what that means for the schools getting reimbursed for Matthew, because FEMA will only reimburse you for it if it is your legal responsibility to fund something. So, staff has numerous concerns with the direction that DM is looking and going here. Thank you.
Commissioner Slory?
Yeah, thinking about this, later on, I have some constitutional proposals, which I'm going to discuss, and there are five of them that are already on the ballot. And thinking about what Jason and the chief just said, in light of those constitutional amendments, it becomes more problematic. My understanding of what you just said, Jason, is that this could cost us, or have a delay of us for a million, two million, three million, we don't know. But it's going to be a significant amount. And two of the amendments are homestead amendments, which would, unless we increased our taxes, our milled rate, limit the funds which we take in. So, there are two legislatively proposed amendments which will reduce the flow of funds into the county. But then there's the fifth one, Florida Amendment 5, which the state legislature feels is good for the state legislature, where they don't want to increase taxes and fees. And that's one that's promoted by both the Speaker of the House and the governor. So, their view of the world is that we should never raise taxes, basically, while at the same time restricting our flow of funds. And it's this type of thing where you'd have, and what this proposal does, as I understand it, is just increase the necessary for the county to have more funds and flexibility. So, you have inconsistent, basically set up a very inconsistent thing, which is going to work to the damage of Indian River County. So, given that that's the way I see things, I think that we basically need to go ahead with this letter, and I'd be happy to move it forward.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Slory. I'll second the motion. And under discussion, Commissioner Zork.
Yes, a couple other questions. I remember during the most recent Hurricane Irma, we were at EOC, and the governor's office put out a call to us to increase our, our facility capacity for South Florida evacuees. How does that fall into the mix when we're now housing people from, from other counties? It gets very complicated. Also, if a city has a school within their city limits, and that is a facility that's open, would the cities then be assuming this responsibility under their FEMA claim in this new interpretation, which we disagree with?
I believe not, because the county is actually the ultimate authority when it comes to emergency preparedness and our reaction to that under Florida Statute 252. So, it would actually be the county's responsibility to ensure that the shelters are up and manned and those types of things.
Okay. All right. Just trying to see if there's other groups that would be affected by this. Do we need to put this on a legislative priority list or a list of concern for the FAC summer meeting, where we can work with the other counties that I'm sure most of them are not happy with this interpretation, or change in interpretation?
I can say on Friday, I attended the Florida Association of County Attorneys' monthly conference call. We actually had a good discussion about this. I had a follow-up conversation with, a lengthy conversation with the new county attorney up in Brevard County, who is also very interested in this issue. So, we plan to be working together. But when I mentioned on the conference call with all the county attorneys that we were doing this letter, there were a lot of other counties very interested in this, wanting to see a copy of it from Nassau County, you know, and the like. So, I plan to forward our letter to the Florida Association of County Attorneys. I also plan to provide it to Brevard County, and Brevard County and I have already talked initially about where we go from here legislatively to work with the, with the folks in Tallahassee to try to correct this issue. So, we're going to be moving forward on trying to protect ourselves on this, and certainly work with the Florida Association of Counties as well.
Thank you, Dylan. Commissioners, any other discussion? Anyone from the public wish to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Slory, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. All in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Chief. Next is moving down to public works. The results of a Phase 1 water quality study of nutrients in the Indian River Farms Water Control District's 8th Street Canal. And we have Keith McCully and Eric Cherst, the dynamic duo here doing our water quality work. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Eric will be the one with the higher intelligence of the two, so any hard questions go to him. We appreciate the opportunity to try to summarize our study, and it actually is sort of a hard presentation for at least me to, to try to give, because the results were sort of chaotic through the study. We, whoops. What we did, initially, the study was brought about because Commissioners Zork had talked with David Gunner, and they identified several location, or canals, sections in Indian River Farms Water Control District's canal network that seemed to have a high, higher growth of aquatic vegetation than other sections did. And the section between 70, what is it, 80, Second Avenue and 74th Street, or I mean, 74th Avenue, seemed to be one of the higher of those. And it was the one we were asked to look at first, because it is adjacent to the West Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant. And there was suspicion that maybe some of the treated effluent that was leaving the treatment process, the physical treatment process entering the wetland system, might be getting into the canal and causing aquatic growth by introducing nutrients. And so, that was a section we looked at between the end of that canal, which is just the west edge of the wastewater treatment plant wetland system, all the way to 74th Avenue, and where it intersects the lateral sea canal. And so, we looked at that at different places along the canal, and you can see on this slide here, it's, there are points A, B, C, D, E, and F. A would be at the westernmost reach of the canal. B was across from the northwest corner of the Deep Settling Pond, which is called DSP on your map there, and opposite one of the wetland cells. And then C is at the northeast corner of a subdivision that discharges its overflow into the canal from its stormwater treatment system. And then D was sort of halfway between there and 74th. And then E is at the end of the canal before it discharges in the lateral sea canal. And then F was on the other side of the lateral sea canal, which picks up water heading from the east in a different drainage basin. And as is in the handout, or the memo we prepared for the initial study, the results were sort of all over the place, and we, we didn't really find a smoking gun to say this is where a big load of nutrients is coming into the canal. With the focus of the study really was to see mainly if it was West Regional Wetland contributing anything, but with the secondary goal of seeing if there were other pipe sources or other points coming into the, discharging into the canal that might be treating or causing the higher increases in nutrients and the associated plant growth. So, the first part of the study, we tested for total nitrogen, nitrate nitrogen, and total phosphorus. And like I said, the results were pretty much scattered around, and we, we really couldn't find any, any particular culprit, so to speak. So, we did a short second phase, which was what basically these slides will be about. And we tested for a couple additional parameters, one being ammonia nitrogen, and the other being ortho-phosphorus. And we tested for those because when you're looking at total nitrogen, for instance, there's a component of total nitrogen that plants can't use, and one of those is, it's called, well, total nitrogen is broken down into ammonia, or TKN, which is total calogol nitrogen, and nitrate nitrogen, which is, we refer to as NOX or NOx. And the TKN nitrogen has two components. It's an organic component and ammonia nitrogen. And the organic component is very, very difficult for plants to assimilate into their tissues. So, it really doesn't contribute to any plant growth in the canal, practically speaking, but the ammonia nitrogen can. So, in the second part, we looked at ammonia nitrogen in addition to the other parameters that we studied. And we also looked at ortho-phosphorus. We broken, broke it out from the total phosphorus, which basically is organic and polyphosphorus, which are hard to assimilate into plants. And then the ortho-phosphorus portion, which is easily assimenable into plant tissue. So, we added two additional sample points, and that is PSP, which is up at the upper left-hand corner, just a little bit east of sample point A. And that was a pipe discharge coming from a lake on private residence that seemed to continually flow into the canal. And it was really the only continual flow from another source into the canal that we noticed during the study, at least when we were out there. And I forgot, should mention that point A being at the tail end of the canal, the water was very shallow and very stagnant, so we pretty much kicked those results out. And then we added DSP, which is the Deep Settling Pond at the West Regional Treatment Facility. And that's the pond that receives the water directly from the, the physical treatment process. It goes into the Deep Settling Pond, and then it's dispersed throughout the wetland treatment cells that are to the left there. And for this study, when we did the second part of this, the three wetland cells that are abutting the canal... And then we added DSP, which is the Deep Settling Pond at the West Regional Treatment Facility. And that's the pond that receives the water directly from the, the physical treatment process. It goes into the Deep Settling Pond, and then it's dispersed throughout the wetland treatment cells that are to the left there. And for this study, when we did the second part of this, the three wetland cells that are abutting the canal were taken out of service for maintenance, so they were dry. So we would have expected very little infiltration into the canal from many of the adjacent wetland cells. So if you look at your NOx nitrogen or your nitrite-nitrate, we have a graph here that shows all the way from the pipe point at PSP, that discharge, all the way to point C, which is at the corner of the subdivision, it's pretty flat as far as NOx goes. And with the blue dot representing the nitrogen concentrate, NOx nitrogen in the Deep Settling Pond. And then at C, it ramps up considerably all the way to point E, showing somewhere east of C, there was another contributing source that we were unable to identify. And even with D, appears to be even additional sources coming in. So, and then on point F there, that dot represents the value we got at point F on the other side of the canal, picking up the water flowing east to west into the lateral sea. So you can see that at least the half of the Eighth Street Canal does have a fairly high concentration of NOx compared at least to the eastern side of the canal there.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Keith to go back one page or one slide?
There.
Did you say that the, during the grab sample period, that the three cells abutting the canal were, were dry at that time?
This would be during the second part we did. When we did the original six samples, they were full of water.
Okay.
Effluent.
But the second time, so you have a difference between?
Yeah, they were taken out of service for maintenance.
Okay.
Keith, just in that slide there, you're not even at point two milligrams per liter. So in the big picture, isn't that a relatively pretty small number?
Yeah, before I came in, I looked at the main relief canal number, because this eventually, this flows into the lateral sea, which flows eventually into the main relief canal. And where we take our average samples at US One, where it flows under the bridge there, it's point two-two milligrams per liter for nitrate nitrogen, or NOx nitrogen, which is, you know, a factor of ten times higher than what we're reading here.
Even though there seems to be a buildup, it's still a relatively small number.
Right, right.
Big picture.
Yes.
You would think as it moves through the system that more plants would uptake that as it makes its way down.
Yeah, so, or it could get diluted. Well, yeah, and then there, that also shows there's a lot of additional nitrogen sources coming in beyond this point as well, considerable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ammonia nitrogen was a little different. It was very low at the pipe source to the west and also in the Deep Settling Pond. And however, it ramps up somewhere between the pipe and our B sample point, opposite the corner of the Deep Settling Pond. And then it sort of stays flat to C, and then it starts to go down. And we're not sure why it's going down. It could either be dilution sources from other contributing flows, or it could be an uptake and by the plants as it's flowing down the canal, because ammonia is pretty easy for the plants to grab. And then as you can see at point F on the opposite side, it's, it's pretty low over there. And I don't have a comparison for the main canal on that one. I don't know if Eric has anything. We, we don't test for ammonia when we're doing the, the other three large canals. But because the Deep Settling Pond is, is so much lower, we're, we're just concluding that it's not contributing anything to this Eighth Street Canal flow. Because you can't go from, even if the Deep Settling Pond was loaded with nitrite-nitrate nitrogen, you can't go backwards in the process and go to ammonia nitrogen from those guys because it's, goes from ammonia nitrogen to nitrite and then to nitrate. And then if you denitrify, it goes to nitrogen gas. It's, there could, there could have been a dead animal or something, you know, who knows what was in the canal then. Or it could have just been wildlife. And orthophosphate slide, sort of similar, there, there, it's very low at the pipe discharge and extremely low at the Deep Settling Pond, which makes sense because the wastewater treatment plant is an advanced wastewater treatment plant. So one of its purposes in life is to take out as much phosphorus as it can. So what comes out of the plant is very low. But you can see that there's something in the, adding phosphorus to the canal, and whether it's this wildlife feeding in the canal or discharges from other properties to the north, it's, it's really tough to say. And you can see just by looking at point F, it also has a sort of a high concentration compared to the pipe flow in this Deep Settling Basin. So it's, it sort of shows that the, the values in the Eighth Street Canal that we looked at really aren't any, a whole lot different than what's coming in from the east there. Whoops. And that, that's pretty much our presentation. We basically concluded that the, there's no contribution from the West Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant Wetland into the canal that might be causing the excessive plant growth that is being experienced. And we were unable to identify any real hotspots that might be contributing flows. And so our recommendation was that the board accept the study and, and conclude it and then approve our final memo and, you know, accept our conclusion, I guess.
Eric, anything you wanted to add, or?
I think Keith pretty much hit all the bullet items, so.
Okay.
That was good.
Commissioners, any question of, of staff on the report? Commissioners, Zork?
If you could put the report, the last page back up again. And again, this is going to when the cells were empty. And so looking at the orthophosphate, let's just take, for example, A and B, so the two dates, which was the time the ponds were empty? Was it the first test or the second one?
Both. They were empty for both. Four, seven twenty, and eight eleven, is that what you're?
Yep.
Yes.
Right.
Now, in the other part of the study, they were full. It was just for these two sample events.
Okay, so which chart would show the other? Okay, I, I can see on the, the table one, Eighth Street Canal Water Quality. Okay, so I can see the, the dates there. So seven twenty and eight eleven were, were empty. And then we have sample dates of nine thirteen, nine twenty, nine twenty-seven. Okay.
Previous year.
Right, those, those samples were just total, total phosphorus. So they weren't, we weren't measuring ortho-phosphorus at that point. And so that could include a lot of your organic, I mean, yeah, organic and the inorganic combined in those numbers.
So these samples were taken after the agenda item from, or were these taken at a different, for a different period?
Well, they were taken in two thousand sixteen, actually, the fall of two thousand sixteen. And we really couldn't take, using that data, we couldn't make any determination as to, to locate a hotspot because it's, basically the results were all over the place. And then we decided just to look at the nitrite-nitrate and ammonia nitrogen and the orthophosphorus that the plants could actually use and try to see if there was a source coming in that would identify. And, and with a particular emphasis to see if it was coming from the wetland system and, or the Deep Settling Pond in particular, or any of the adjacent wetland cells.
Okay, so the, the two thousand sixteen testing was when the system was operational, but we didn't drill down into some of the subsets of nitrogen. And then when we did the grab samples, the three cells abutting the canal were empty.
Correct.
Correct. And I, and I don't know when is the right time to, to test for something, but it seemed if they were, I'd be, not, not asking to have the test redone, but if the cells that are abutting the canal are empty, then the likelihood of it moving something from?
Well, even if you look at the, if you go on the memo on page five, we've got a graph of the average nitrite-nitrate nitrogen along the canal. And you can see that opposite the Deep Settling Pond between B and C is the lowest measured values in the canal. And that's when the adjacent ponds were full of water. So it ramps up after that considerably.
And there, and the district's high maintenance spot falls between A and C. I don't think they have any issues from, from C to F, but?
Well, I don't know. When I, I walked it, the further east you went, I saw more plants at that time, particularly between D and E, there was a, an abundance of plants.
Okay.
And, I mean, they, they were throughout the canal, but it seemed to me that the further east you went, the more plants appeared, aquatic plants.
Okay. All right, well, I'll, I'll bring a copy of this out to them and see if that spurs any other questions, but I don't see any problem with accepting the report the way it's, you know, with the information that we've gathered.
Is that a motion to?
Make a motion to accept the report?
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Zork, seconded by Commissioner Fletcher. Any discussion among commissioners? Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Gentlemen, thank you very much, appreciate it. Second item under Public Works is a Millstone Landing, Seventeenth Street Southwest Construction Progress Update. Mr. Rich Speerka, Public Works Director, good morning, Rich.
Morning, Commissioners. As of seven o'clock this morning, the roadway was not open. They ran into asphalt issues at the entrance. They're out there today looking at it to, to figure out what they're going to do. We're working with them. We hope that it'll be open this week, but I said that last week, and here I am today telling you it's not open. So as it stands right now, the road is still closed on Seventeenth Street Southwest. And best guess, it'll be open by this time next week when I report back.
Okay. And, and just as a reminder, Commissioners, we did lift the moratorium on issuance of any certificates of occupancy, so people can move into their homes. But we still haven't affected the moratorium on building permits, and that will continue until Rich gives us the all-clear and we move forward. Rich, on Twenty-third Street, any progress down there?
They actually had a dump truck and a loader out there today. First day in like three weeks, but yes, they were, they were moving. I talked to the construction, the contractor, and they're planning on moving forward a lot faster now. He's freed up some equipment, so we should see some action in there. Shop drawings are in right now, and they're ordering materials. So we, we hope to see some activity, but as of today, they had a loader and a dump truck.
Very good. And then one question from the residents on the Seventeenth Street is, I know that the developer has applied for a permit to install the security gates there. Do you know what the status of that permit application is?
Actually, the homeowner applied for, the homeowners association applied for that. I do not know.
It's still run by the developer.
Somebody's applied for the gate, but I don't know the status of that.
Okay.
I can find out and let, let everybody know.
Okay, that'd be great. Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Speerka?
One, was that the area of the asphalt that they're going to have to replace, was that maybe contributed to a leak from a piece of equipment or something that may have caused some asphalt issues?
There's one spot where they spilled diesel fuel, but there's other spots that were just, had an installation problem.
Okay. And do they, for Twenty-third, do they have all the permits that they need for, for that work?
They've had that since April two thousand seventeen.
Okay. So there's no holdups there?
No, sir.
And no pulls to move, I don't believe, right?
No.
I don't think, right? Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, so Commissioners, I don't think we need any action here. We do have, we have lifted the CO moratorium, but the building permit moratorium is still in place until Rich gives the all-clear. Unless anybody wishes to change that status, I don't see us having to take any action here this morning.
Okay.
Rich, thank you very much, appreciate it. That moves us, there's no county attorney matter, so we move to commissioner matters. Commissioner Bob Slurry, the vice chairman, has two issues. His first is the sale of Vero Electric. Commissioner Slurry, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As all of us know, as of today, it looks like the sale of the Vero Electric system to FPNL is going to go through. I think that's a wonderful thing, and I'll note that many people have helped to make this a reality. Many people get credit for a number of assists to actually bring this to fruition. But in my mind, there are two people who were indispensable to the process. And those two people are Steve Farady and Glenn Heron. These two men were citizen advocates whose efforts got the ball rolling and steadily and constantly worked and are still working to get the low rates for all county residents. They've worked for over nine years on this project and are now very nearly about to get the deal done. In today's fast-paced age, nine years of working on a project, it really has got to be the equivalent of Moses' forty years journey to the promised land. And to Mr. Farady and, and Heron, it's got to feel like it's been about that long. So I would like to take this opportunity today to thank Dr. Farady and Mr. Heron for all their efforts over the last nine years. And I'd also like to ask the board if we might put together a proclamation, and I'd be happy to work on staff to, to do this, to be given to Mr. Heron and Dr. Farady, but timed to the arrival of the first FPNL bills to county customers, county and city customers of the city system who will now be getting the low FPNL rates.
Second, if that's a motion.
Now, I'll put that in the form of the motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Slurry. I, I did hear the first, second from Commissioner Fletcher, so we'll go with that. And this is for a proclamation for Glenn Heron and Dr. Farady to be given at the time of the first FPL bills rolling out. Commissioners, any discussion on the motion?
Well deserved.
Very good. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Next item under Commissioner Vice Chairman Slurry is a Constitutional Revision Commission update. Commissioner Slurry, you have the floor again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, I know that all the citizens of Indian River County have been really, you know, excited about the process up in Tallahassee, the Constitutional Revision Commission. I think at least twice in the last year, somebody's asked me about it. But this is an important process, and I, I think that it's incumbent myself, but all members of the Constitutional Revision Commission now to start publicizing what's actually been done. So in really brief, the Constitutional Revision Commission, after a bunch of pub publicarians and actions by the commissioners themselves, came up with a hundred and three proposals. And at this point, they're proposed proposals. During the committee weeks of the CRC, we knocked that down to thirty-seven. Back in the week of March nineteenth, the whole committee got together and we knocked those down to twenty-five. The twenty-five went to what's called style and drafting, where they put them into a sort of better form. And at style and drafting, they have the ability to lump different proposals together or keep them separate. And what just this week has, has come to us is, after one of the twenty-five proposals was withdrawn by its proposer, proposal, twenty-four proposals, which have been now condensed into twelve proposals that, that we will discuss next week. Of these twelve proposals, eighteen of the proposals were lumped and six are standing by themselves. I'm hoping that by the time it gets through the CRC next week, these twelve proposals will be significantly cut. But based on the voting records the last time around, I, I'm not too optimistic at this point. And I, I will note, and I don't think anybody here will be surprised by this, of the no votes, I led. So I did my job to, to keep.
And I can confirm that, because I did check the voting records on many of these proposals, and. proposals, and you were very strong on your no votes, Commissioner Solari.
But there were, there are actually a couple people who voted for every proposal. And the mean, the mean, so the mean was four proposals. So half the people voted for almost all but three of the proposals. I found that to be a little bit problematic. But right after that CRC meeting, or group of meetings, I realized that we had five other proposals on the ballot. And those are the ones I'll actually discuss today. So in the past week, I did some research on them and realized that I still have a lot of work to do. And there are, as I mentioned, five. And I'm going to start with Amendment Three. Amendment Three is the voter approval of casino gambling initiative. This was a citizen initiative. And a yes vote provides voters, through citizen-initiated ballot measures, with the exclusive right to decide whether to authorize casino gambling in Florida. And I'll note today, this really ought to be called the Seminole and Disney World Initiative. It's Disney World and the Seminole Tribe of Florida who paid over $6 million to get this onto the ballot. And I can only guess at this point that those two groups intend to reap a very rich return from this initiative. And I'm confident that the Seminoles, who will actually get a great return, because it seems to me that this undermines the Florida legislature's ability to negotiate a very strong gambling contract with the Seminoles in the future. But, you know, one of the things I didn't realize at first or thinking about, it was only after I read it, is that could this possibly be constitutional? I mean, it's basically trying to put 100% of the authority to change this into the hands of a citizen initiative, one of the five types of ways of changing the Constitution that our Constitution allows. So I'd ask, can a future CRC or constitutional convention be bound by this? Or just like we cannot bind future commissions and understand that just a citizen's initiative is the same as every other way of amending the Constitution, they have to be approved at the end by the citizens. So could this constitutional amendment possibly bind future legislative, initially constitutional amendments, if they're at the end of the day passed by citizens? I don't know the answer to that question, but it's certainly something we'd have to do some work on. So that's sort of intellectually interestingly, but in terms of politics and bad government, the fact that this was pushed by Walt Disney World and the Seminole Tribe really make this suspicious. Moving on to number four, Voting Rights Restoration, Voting Rights Restoration for Felons Initiative. And I believe the state of Florida is one of only four states that don't automatically restore the voting rights of felons once they've basically paid the price. So once they've been to jail for as long as they're told to go to jail for, and once their parole is done, and once they've paid any fines that they owe. But the state of Florida has a, had a process where you had to wait five to seven years, depending upon the crime, to get your voting rights back. But it's not to get your voting rights back, it's to go through a process which involves the Florida Cabinet to get your voting rights back. And there were people who thought that process were flawed. On February 1st, 2018, U.S. District Court Judge Mark Walker ruled the present system unconstitutional, and evidently Attorney General Bondi and others are going to fight that. But in my view, again, the little I understand on this one so far is that it was not the five to seven-year wait that the judge declared unconstitutional, but the fact that the system was basically not working. There were real delays in this. And it's, I mean, the way I talk about or think about to myself is basically the state of Florida abused the system. And there was a huge backlog. And it's almost, well, what do you think happens when you're depriving people of their civil rights for no good basis? I mean, and by that, I mean, there's a process to get your civil rights restored, and you're essentially bureaucratically ignoring it. So, and now I'm going to have to read that legal case by Judge Walker, rather, thank you very much. But I think this is going to be an important issue, and I think that we all have to get a better understanding of it. Now we get to the big three in terms of, you know, how they, how different political people are going to ruin the basic tax system of the state of Florida. And there are three amendments that basically deal, three proposals basically deal with the tax structure. Amendment One is the homestead exemption increase, which I basically call, you know, how to get politicals elected to higher office proposal. This was a legislatively-referred constitutional amendment, and a yes vote supports exempting the portion of home values between $100,000 and $125,000 from property taxes other than school taxes. So keep in mind, these things impact the county greatly, the county government greatly, but not the school system. And I'll note that currently, the Florida Constitution provides for a homestead exemption on a portion of home values between $0 and $25,000 and $15,000 and $75,000. So if Amendment One is passed, the homestead exemption for a home valued at, say, $200,000 will, would be $75,000. And if passed, it is estimated that Amendment One will decrease municipal and county revenues throughout the state by almost $600 million. And right along with that homestead exemption increase is Amendment Two, which is a permanent cap on non-homestead partial assessment increases. This, again, is a legislatively-referred constitutional amendment. Here, a yes vote makes permanent the cap of 10% on annual homestead partial assessment increase, now set to expire on January 1st, 2019. So in a sense, this does nothing new when the last permanent cap on non-homestead partial assessment increases went through. It was for a limited period of time, I believe 10 years, and this will just make it permanent. But again, coupled with the first one, it basically changes the adverbal tax system, which county governments depend on in ways we don't really understand. But for me, the big one, is the two-thirds vote of the legislative to increase taxes or fees. And this, again, is a legislatively-referred constitutional amendment. And here, a yes vote supports requiring a two-thirds vote of each chamber of the Florida State Legislature to enact new taxes or fees or to increase existing ones. Note, as I read this, this does not say two-thirds of those voting. And I think this is important, but it's a higher bar of two-thirds of each house. Thus, anyone absent or abstaining from the vote is taken as a no vote. So for example, there are 120 people or members of the Florida House. They are called to vote to raise a tax. 100 are present. To pass the tax or fee will need 80 votes, not the two-thirds, which would be 67 votes. And that is a very, very high bar. So this will be subject to a later diatribe, and I mean, this is going to be a real one, because I tend to believe this is going to cause serious problems to the state of Florida over the next 10 years, somewhere between now and 10 years. We are going to be regretting this. The state of Oklahoma did something similar, but they did not in theirs exempt school systems, and I don't think this one does. And their school system has basically been destroyed because of that. So there are going to be bad, bad things that come out of this. And I would guarantee and accept any bet from any Florida legislature today that this is going to hurt the poorest segments of our society more than anybody else. So if you look at one proposal between these five and the CRC, and you want to think about the impact of it on the future of Florida, look at this one. And I hope that all the citizens of the state of Florida take a hard look at this one. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that cheery update, I will conclude, but I do promise the one on Amendment Five. And I will, from now going forward, probably every two or three, about two meetings a month, bring updates on the other ones, because I don't think it helps to bring more than maybe two or three constitutional issues up at a time. But again, I really do hope that people start to take this seriously and start looking at them now, because if you wait until two or three weeks before the election, it's really going to be too late to really go through them all and have some idea of how they're going to work together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just a couple of things, or, Mr. Vice Chairman, a couple of things. Talking with the supervisor elections, Leslie Swan, last week, her concern is, if all these go through, she thinks she's looking at a three-page ballot, front and back. And if you remember, I think it was two or three general elections ago, there was a large ballot like that, and it almost like shuts down the voting process, because people are trying to go through all these amendments on there, they're not familiar with them, and the lines start getting longer and longer at the polling places, and it resulted in all kinds of issues. So she's very worried that if all these things go through, we're going to have another instance of that. And the thing that really got me with this style and drafting is, they would take a proposal that might have broad public support, like additional benefits for first responders, and they package it with another proposal that probably isn't that good, but they're counting on the popularity of the frontrunner to carry that proposal. And I think it's awful that they can mix these things like this. You know, if we put a petition on there, it has to be a single subject and clear wording. And the fact they can just mix them like that, I find is astounding. So I just want to thank you for all your hard work and perseverance and being a watchdog on this for us, and look forward to your future updates.
Thank you very much.
That concludes Commissioner Matters. We move on to special districts and boards. The Solid Waste Disposal District, Item One, award of a bid for landfill segment three, Cell Two expansion, and segment two, partial closure, and landfill gas system expansion. And we have Mr. Burke here. Good morning, Vinnie.
Good morning, sir. For the record, Vincent Burke, Director of Utility Services. Managing Director of the Solid Waste Disposal District as well. So if I could just sell some complex agenda items, we have two today. The first item is to talk about construction. The second item is to talk about the soft costs. Combine the two, you get the total project cost. We're here to talk about the first item, which is the construction cost. Trash is expensive, and we hope you're sitting down for this presentation. So within the construction world, I also want to break it down into old versus new. And so with the help of CDM Smith, which was authorized by the Board in July of 2017, there was initial update to find out what plans and updates were needed to solicit a permit. Fast forward to October 3rd of 2017, the Board then authorized CDM to move forward with the design permitting and bidding assistance for the project. With that being said, they went out, did some of their due diligence, did some investigations, and applied for the FDE permit. And working with the Purchasing Department, bid number 2018-025 was put out on July, January 1st, excuse me, of this year, 2018, with a 60-day turnaround time for the bids to be brought back on March 1st, 2018. Multiple addendums were issued and answered, and total DemandStar, which is the online utility that we use to subscribe to these things, 656 subscribers are on to DemandStar, 52 vendors downloaded the plans and specifications, and three vendors submitted bids. So on page one of your agenda items, you'll see the sum total that was presented to staff from the Purchasing Department, noting the three bidders, Thali Construction Company out of Hillsboro, North Carolina, West Construction, and Southeast Environmental Contracting out of Georgia. Those total bids are represented on page one of your addenda, addendum, excuse me. 16.1 was the total bid for the lowest bidder, up to 18.5 for the highest bidder. On page two, you'll go into the analysis, where it was determined that we are at the point where we need to expand Cell One to go to the east, Cell Two. We have a drawing that we will show in a minute, just depicting that. Just wanted to step you through this issue at the time. But in essence, we have to build new capacity in our cell, which is going to be segment three, Cell Two. And we also have to close the old hill that you can see from I-95. 180 feet is the maximum height that we've reached. So my current pen location is Cell One right now. That's where the active face is being used to date for material that's brought in from the haulers and from other commercial customers. Segment three, Cell Two, is just to the east. This is the 10.6 plus or minus acres that will need to be built with geomembranes, the liner system, to be able to handle additional waste. And then we talked about Cell Segment Two, which is the old, roughly about 25 acres. There's drainage improvements, there's roadway improvements, and there's some infill. In addition to that, there's some landfill gas well expansion that needs to be part of that project. So if you go back to page two of your agenda, you'll see that in conjunction with CDM Smith and purchasing, staff took a look at the three bids. And there was an anomaly in the lowest bidder, where they incorrectly had calculated a 10% contingency. We asked for a 10% contingency for all the contractors submit. Thali Construction had anomaly, explained in the agenda, but after reviewing that with staff, there was a base bid of about 14.576 with a 10% on top of that. So the grand total base bid, including the 10% contingency, was just over $16 million. CDM Smith had noticed that West Construction had a slight unit cost pricing error in their calculations of about $11,400, and so that price is updated. And so we have updated pricing for the Board to consider, not what was initially turned into purchasing back on March 1st. In 2014, the Solid Waste and Disposal District hired a different engineering firm to come up with a master plan, and part of that master plan was some unit cost pricing and some evaluation of what it would cost for the closure of the old cell and the construction of the new at the time. They had anticipated that was just over $11 million. But after CDM Smith was engaged to do the updated design, and based on other material costs and more recent projects such as St. Lucie County, their estimated opinion probable cost was $19.2 million, substantially higher than the 2014 numbers. We know that we've had experiences in HDP pricing differentials, not only in the utility construction, but we've seen this price escalation in Public Works. We've seen some of the material manufacturers, especially with the hurricanes that have been experienced the last three years, have caused some issues with material prices going up. In addition to that, some of the material that's used for landfill cover has escalated as well. So therefore, we had a much higher opinion probable cost. But again, that was a 19.2 OPC, and the lowest bidder, the corrected bidder, was just over $16 million from Thali Construction out of North Carolina. On the permitting side, CDM Smith prepared the documents and submitted to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. They don't have some of the technical wherewithal to be able to review that down the southeast district, so they have to reach out to some of the folks up in the other parts of the state. They reviewed the plans and specifications, they asked some questions, and CDM Smith was able to answer those. And on March 21st of this year, the FDEP issued a notice of acceptance of use for the general permit. Funding. So some of the funding that we had talked about, and again, we're going to talk about the construction costs, and then we're going to talk about the soft costs. We outlined some of the soft costs that were delineated on page four or five of your packet to look at. What we're saying is engineering services, phase one, two, and three. The Board had previously, as I mentioned at the beginning of this talk, awarded phases one and two on July 18th of last year and October 3rd of last year for close to $700,000. Phase three is being submitted as a separate agenda item right after this. And if you combine all the soft costs associated with this project, you're just over $2 million in terms of the design permitting and oversight for the construction portion of that. We're not here to talk about the soft costs at this point, we're just here to explain that there are costs that the Board needs to recognize in terms of the expansion costs of what we actually have to do to build the 10.6 acres versus the closure cost, which we are required to by law, put monies into a closure account, and also have monies available for 30 years after that landfill is closed. And so we've split those into the expansion and closure breakdown, so that the Board can at least look at what those costs are delineated between those two categories. And roughly, it's about a 45% to 55%. 45% for the new construction and 55% of the construction cost for the closure. So we also wanted to make mention to the Board that we, based on the 2014 solid waste master plan dollars, had some money set aside for this fiscal year and next fiscal year for the construction portion of the new cell. We are okay on the escrow portion of the monies that we have been collecting and setting aside, working with finance to make sure that we adhere to the requirements of the DEP in terms of having enough dollars. DEP in terms of having enough dollars set aside. But it's, I wanted to make mention to the board that we have some dollars that are not enough in terms of paying for the actual cost to build the new cell. And so we have some money set aside in this fiscal year, but we're going to have to take a look with the budget office and with the county administrator on what options are available to us in next fiscal year. So I wanted to make the board aware that there's approximately $5.8 million that are going to be needed to be able to offset some of the construction portion of the project in terms of either cutting costs or perhaps looking at other options available. So, in summary, we have money for the closure side, for the escrow dollars that are set aside. We have just over $12 million. It's estimated for the, including the contingency, that we need about $9.9 million for the closure portion. Again, that's the 180 feet, that's the large hill that you see from I-95, closing it off, putting the geotextile membrane, putting the two feet of cover material on that, on that hill, and then being able to have some additional environmental services that go for the next 30 years. It's on the expansion side where we have some dollars in this fiscal year, but we're going to need to set aside some dollars in next fiscal year to pay for the construction portion of the project. And so in summary, staff would like to make two recommendations. We'd like to have the board approve bid number 2018-025 to Thali Construction Company out of Hillsborough, North Carolina, as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the segment three, cell two expansion, that's just to the east of the cell that's in use today, the segment two, partial closure, the landfill gas system expansion, for a grand total base bid of items one through six, in the amount of $14,576,000, with a 10% contingency of $1,457,660, for a grand total base bid for all items one through seven, including the contingency of $16,342,600. To also allow for the direct purchase through the purchasing division, if necessary, for the county to save some dollars if possible. And second, to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the attached sample agreement as presented, pending the receipt of the bonds and insurance requirements and final approval by the county attorney as to form a legal sufficiency. That concludes our presentation for the construction portion bid award recommendation. We're certainly available if the board has any questions.
Thank you, Vinnie. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Yes, I have a couple.
Commissioner Zork?
Do we know with the closure of the current cell, with our recycling efforts over the last five years, has that added, pushed that date further back to where we're at today versus if we didn't have recycling, would we have been looking at this three years earlier or sometime period earlier?
Hama, you can answer this question, but I believe we pushed it back a couple of years, only because we've had the opportunity to try to not put all the material at the end and then try to push all our efforts to cell one. So we were actually putting the selective material in cell one, building that up, and now we're able to then bring the final material to the, to the upper landfill and close that off. So I know that we had delayed that process, we had it in our CIP earlier, we had pushed that back. Certainly, we have some additional work to do on the recycling efforts. We've increased our rates here recently, but certainly there's some additional work to go, even though we're continuing to add some material to the landfill.
In cell one, didn't that originally receive a boost in the height that was allowed on that after the '04, '05 storms? And will that height increase be forwarded to the, to the new cell?
For the record, in Hama Chumeta, it's solid waste disposal district, yes, the entire landfill cells that we have, we have eight more cells that are permitted, we have a 20-year permit, and for the entire footprint of all the future cells, we're permitted to the 180 feet, so that they will all match the 180-foot height. And I think back after the hurricanes, what we did is, we put C and D on the side slopes, and with that, that was able to get the vertical expansion up to 180 feet on the old portions near 95. And we'll continue on that throughout the whole footprint of the landfill.
Okay. And last question at the moment, let me pull this back up again. When we create the new cell two, if that's correct, the right number?
Yes.
Will there be any fill excavation under that that would offset the top cover cost for cell, the one that we're closing? Or are they going to be bringing in off-site material for that? Or does the new cell just go ground level? But I kind of remember that I thought there, when they put the liner down on the bottom below, that they, they do go a little bit into the ground, or at least it seemed like they did when we...
No, with the water table, as, you know, how it is in this part, we actually have fill material that will be brought in for cell one.
Okay.
We did for cell one, as the same thing for cell two, we will have some fill material. Overall, the part of this, if you look at the overall $16 million, about $5 million is worth, is imported fill that we're bringing in for both of these projects.
That may explain some of the recent transactions of some fill pits west of 95 off Oslo that recently changed hands, maybe that's where, I mean, the closer you can get the material to the site, the more efficient you are with it, so.
Sure.
Good for those folks. All right, that's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioners Zork. Commissioners, anybody else? Okay, then your pleasure, we have a recommendation by staff.
What was staff recommendation?
Second, Commissioner Adams, second the motion. Motion by Commissioner Fletcher, second by Commissioner Adams for staff recommendation. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to the motion before us? Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. After listening to all the financial jargon, do we anticipate a tax increase as a result of all of this? Or how is that going to work out?
I think Vinnie and Jason and Mike will have to sit down, look at the budget. It probably would not be a tax increase, but we would be looking at our solid waste disposal district rates. This is a standalone district, so whatever revenue may or may not be needed would come via the solid waste assessment. And I don't think we give you that answer.
Maybe I used the wrong word, tax increase. I guess I used increase on the public utilization or correct term.
Sounds like a tax increase coming to me, so.
Yeah, still increase.
I didn't want to imply that you're property taxes, but Jason, do we have a feel for it yet, or?
So, yeah, it is an assessment, but, you know, rhymes with tax. And so basically, for half the cost for the closure, that money's already set aside. We've been setting it aside per requirements in Florida statutes and accounting principles. So that's already been set aside, required to be set aside and accounted for. The other part is the expansion, which we don't, we're not required to set money aside for, but we do plan for that. So what's happened here is the cost of that is a little bit more than we were anticipating. Right now, we've got enough reserves to absorb that for this project. However, as these costs go up, the amount that we need to be setting aside for that next expansion, because we have to plan for that next expansion, all that, that will hopefully be several years down the road, hopefully we'll expand that life with, with more recycling. But from a long-term standpoint, we're going to have to look and see if an adjustment may be needed. Right now, there's not an adjustment needed to fund this. However, we do need to do, to work this into our long-term planning, and there may be a need to, on a going-forward basis, make an adjustment so we can fund that next expansion.
I read that as, after all this, I read this as we anticipate a increase in our rates. I mean, you didn't, yes, that's the way I understand it. Am I, am I wrong? I mean, you're talking about planning and all that, reserve, I mean, reserves is the same thing as tax increase.
We could have increases going forward, this is getting more expensive. If you look, the budget in SWIDS, about $11 million a year. One million of that now is money that we're setting aside for the closure, and we need to be setting aside about another million dollars for, for the expansions. So this business isn't getting any cheaper. It was a lot cheaper the last time we did an expansion than this. So those, those rates are pretty similar. They're not based on property taxes, is a thing I'll point out, there's a rate for a single-family home. And you pay about $100 is the rate for a single-family home. If you go back to 19, to the mid-1980s, you're paying about $90. So this isn't an area where we've really increased, there's no, we get no benefit from any increase in taxable value. The amount somebody's paying, there aren't a whole lot of things that you're paying the same amount you are, you were in 1980, in the 1980s for, that we are. So I say all that to say, there may be an increase, we don't, we haven't made a determination at this time whether one will be needed. I can tell you, we can fund these projects with the reserves we have on hand.
Is there any way to reduce the cost, like reduce the size of cell two? For instance, go out with another RFP and rebid?
So you can reduce the size, but it'll hold less garbage, and you'll be back doing it again sooner. And there's, there's, there's a, there's a fine balance of doing this more often or less often. You want to have a project that's scaled right, that you're getting those mobilization and the engineering costs that you're, that you're already going to have, that'll be a larger percentage of the overall cost. I think what we have here is a cost-effective project that will provide us capacity for several more years.
Thank you.
Commissioner Florrie?
Just to my take from everything you said, I think Bob's basically right. I mean, if, not knowing the intricacies of government, I mean, if I was listening to this and it was my house, and I'm a homeowner, I'd think, ah, it looks like a tax increase for this is coming. And we can call something else, and it's not for anything we've done in the past, but as the county administrator says, you know, things are getting more expensive, not less expensive. So, you know, it's just one of those things that happen in life. So, I mean, to be clear to the public, I think what we're going to look at, look at in the future is an increase in the assessment to solid waste district. And it's not something that we can actually avoid, though. I mean, people keep on generating a lot of trash, we're not going to generate a whole lot less of trash, even with the recycling. So just a fact, unfortunate fact of life is that we're going to have to pay for these things. That's, I mean, just nicely simplified.
Well, certainly, I don't think anyone here is looking to increase the financial burden to any of us citizens, but, you know, in downsizing the, or scaling back, we would only be increasing future costs. And in addition, we have a higher burden, and that's to the health, safety, and welfare to the citizens. And we have to plan correctly, otherwise it's going to cost us far greater in the future. So if we can bring back the, the numbers on what we have, maybe in the subsequent conversation, we'll have a better feel for it. But I appreciate what Mr. Johnson is stating. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this motion? Commissioner Zork?
Yes. During the presentation, you mentioned that there, in the initial bids when they were received, there was a, a miscalculation in the contingency number, and then that was, these numbers look like that's been rectified. So was that sent out to the respondents to fix that? And we're, we're not looking at any bid challenges, because one person put in one contingency and somebody put in a different one?
Good morning, Jennifer Hyde, County Purchasing Manager. The bid documents themselves allow us to remedy mathematical calculations, which in the submitted bids, which is what we consider this to be, and the purchasing manual also authorizes me and also the department director to correct any kind of mathematical calculation. So it's just kind of standard. We do it a lot, if you notice, on our roadway bids, if there's a mathematical error. So it's the same way we look at it. And since this is just the contingency, we're not very concerned with a protest.
Okay. And with the contingency, what, since we've asked them to add that to it, what, what would allow them to then dip it to the contingency? A change in the scope, or an unexpected occurrence? Or just because it's, to me, when it's there, then it's like, how can I earn a portion of that through services that they, additional services they may need to provide that are outside the scope?
Commissioner, what would happen is they would submit a request to the engineer, the engineer would review the request, and then, you know, would, would provide a recommendation to staff. So it's not just an open blanket. But one of the things that could come up is quantities. The engineer has estimated quantities for, for example, the amount of fill. And what we're looking at is, there's, so there's a unit price for that. We'll be looking at actual in-place quantities. And so, you know, the truckloads will be looked at, we'll be doing a final survey on how much, you know, material has been placed. So there could be some differential on what the bid quantity that the engineer estimated and the actual quantity, where we could potentially have to utilize the contingency. It could be the other way, where the engineer estimated higher, and we could see some savings. But it's, it's based on actual quantities.
So it goes both ways?
It does, it does.
There's good news, we could benefit from that.
It's just that the large, you know, size of this project and the magnitude of quantities we're talking about, that's where the 10% contingency is kind of needed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, we do have a motion from Commissioner Fletcher, second by Commissioner Adams. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Second item is Indian River County Landfill Amendment Number Two to Work Order Number One to CDM Smith. Vinnie, welcome again.
Again, Vincent Burke, Director of Utility Services. We have CDM Smith here, if there's any questions that myself or Hama Chumeta cannot answer. We talked about the three phases. The first two phases have already gotten board approval from January and October of last year. On January 18th, the board approved CDM Smith in the amount of $131,820. In October, for the actual design services, permit submittal, that amount was $558,679. With the recently approved motion on the Thali Construction, there is need to have continuing services, oversight for the construction, almost like an owner's rep, where, as Mr. Metta was talking about, they're going to check the quantity of material coming in, they're going to look at the landfill, they're going to look at the geotextile membranes, they're just going to be doing some non-destructive testing on these thermal welds that are going to go in on the liner-type system. They're going to be doing daily reports, they're going to be interacting with the contractor, they're going to have subcontractor, SBS to be on-site as well, looking at the daily reports, looking at the materials, looking and making sure that the installation has been done in accordance with, A, the FDEP permit, and B, the design. So with that being said, phase three is broken out into multiple tasks. We have those identified on page two, including but not limited to the quality management of the project, the general engineering services during construction, any specialty engineering services. There might be some questions that come up about a particular installation that they're going to have intimate knowledge, being the design engineer of record, that they can answer on behalf of us. If there's any, obviously, change orders, increase or decreases, they're going to be looking at the quantities, they're making recommendations to Mr. Metta, we'll be detailing that. They're also going to be looking at the QAQC, quality assurance for the liner system. That's a primary importance, to make sure that this thing is installed properly. So the sum total of that amount is $1.3 million. And we had identified in the previous agenda, and again, in this agenda item, the delineation between the expansion costs and the closure costs for what we call the, the soft costs, the, the engineering services. And so if you sum total those three phases that we had talked about, as delineated on page three of the agenda, you're looking at $2,012,649. If you combine the construction portion with the Thali contractors and the soft cost, the engineering portion, combine those two, you'll get a sum total cost of $18,46,909. So staff would recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve Indian River County Landfill Amendment Number Two to Work Order Number One with CDM Smith, in the amount of $1,322,150, to provide phase three engineering services. As our owner's representative, related to the Class One landfill, segment three, cell two expansion, the segment two partial closure, and the landfill gas system expansion. And second, authorize the chairman to execute the attached work order that's been presented. Certainly, we're available for any questions from staff or CDM Smith.
Commissioners, questions of staff?
One, kind of going back to the contingency number, so if they had something that went over, the engineers would have to validate or approve that change, so there would be, would the engineering fee be covered under the change order under contingency, or would it be covered under a change order under this agreement?
There are certain, as part of the construction project, there's, there's certain amount of, you know, requests or items that the contractor may ask, that's included in sort of the base scope from the engineer. It's kind of expected that certain things will come up. If it's something major, then I think we've kind of indicated in there that, that the engineer, you know, could come back and request a change order. But right now, there is no contingency. But right now, there is no contingency added to the engineering services, the contingency for the construction contract would not be utilized for the engineering services. We would come back to the board if there was something that came up that required additional engineering.
Okay.
So in the, in the contract, there's a 390-day final completion, and what CDM Smith has said is, hey, caveat, if it goes beyond that, for whatever reason, we have the right to come back and ask for additional services that are not included in what has been presented today. I just throw that out there because we cannot control the weather. I know that recent reports say that there might be an active hurricane season, we're going to knock on wood and hope for the best, but certainly, we have to recognize that there's rain and other events that may cause interruption to the construction schedule. We're going to have a contract with the contractor, we're going to hold him to that, but we certainly want to make sure that, you know, there may be things outside of our control that may have influences on what goes on at that landfill.
And, and my hope would be that, you know, A, the, the contingencies would be kept to, to a limited amount, hopefully those quantities are close. I assume when we're paying $2 million in engineering fees, we're getting a lot of expertise for that, and those calculations will be pretty close. I would also say that contemplates a lot of staff time, and that, that that's part of what's contemplated, is managing any potential drawdowns of, of that contingency from the, from the, from the construction company would be what's contemplated as, as, as the engineer's job within that fee that's, that's before you today.
Thank you. Jason, commissioners, any other questions? Commissioners, your pleasure. We have a motion from Commissioner Adams, I'll second the motion. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero. Commissioners, that concludes the agenda. Is there any other business for the good of the public? Seeing none, stand adjourned.